Recording and display any relevant documentation for each agenda item.
Recording has begun.
All right, good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, July 28, 2020, regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District to order. The time is 7:02 PM. Please note that in support of physical distancing during the local public health emergency, in accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order, the relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we are conducting the meeting via video conference. Because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when Commissioner, staff, and public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. If any presenter who is speaking during the meeting would like to leave prior to the end of the meeting, please state your name and announce that you are leaving for the benefit of the recording. Please, please practice considered video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on the camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren.
Here.
Vice President Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Duffy, you're muted.
You're muted Duffy.
Unmute. There we go. Yeah, I'm here. Thanks.
Great. Commissioner Sprehn.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
Okay, all commissioners, excuse me, all commissioners are present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a roll call of presenters and district staff. Assistant Fire Chief Glass. Okay, thank you. Santa Clara County Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency Weed Abatement Manager Kumray.
I'm here.
Thank you. Emergency Services Manager Gluhan.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Present.
District Legal Counsel Siegel.
Present.
Special Project Service Consultant Hendricks.
Present.
Presenters and staff are accounted for.
All right, item number two. Public comment. Persons wishing to address the district on any subject, whether or not on the agenda, may do so now. Please note, however, the district is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. Please note that while the district board will hear comment upon items which are on the agenda at this time, the district will not act on any such item until the item is under consideration by the district. District policies to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker. Do we have any public comments on items on or not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to item three, Commission President's remarks.
Excuse me. Mr. President, could you check your headset? You're a little bit garbled when you're speaking.
Yeah, my microphone is not top notch.
That did it.
Yep, okay. So, so first of all, thank you everyone for once again, I know I probably said this in June, that, you know, when we first started doing this, I would be surprised if we were doing it in June. Now here we are in July, height of the summer, and we're still, you know, remote. Haven't seen it, most of you, in four, going on four or five months now. So, thank you to the staff for making this happen, being flexible, and figuring out how to, you know, adapt to the circumstances to keep the district's business moving forward. Just, you know, to kind of, you know, to remind me of, you know, the importance of the work that we're doing here. Last week, some of the smoke from the mineral fire blew up from Central Coast. And it just, you know, the air got that orange tint to it, that the smoke was in the air. It just brought it home to me that fire season is upon us, and that it's, it's coming. And the work we do now in prevention and preparedness, you know, there's, there's a definite purpose and a reason we do it, and it's, and you know, and the height of that fire season is coming up soon. So, just, you know, to me, it reiterated the importance of all the work the staff and this commission does. So, with that said, I want to turn to the agenda. We've got a full agenda for tonight. And I, you know, so we will now move on to item four, Adoption of Resolution 20-24. Resolution of the Board of Los Altos Fire County Fire District adopting weed abatement report and ordering cost of abatement to be a special assessment on the representative's property. All right, so we have to do 4A, which is, public hearing. Before we proceed with the public hearing, will Weed Abatement Manager Mo Kumray, please provide a quick overview of the abatement report and the special assessment process? Go ahead, Mo.
Hello. The, excuse me. The Weed Abatement Program runs in, from here, runs in three stages. Back in November, the district declared weed, brush, and rubbish public nuisance, and set a date for a public hearing that took place in January. At that public hearing, property owners had an opportunity to contest their inclusion in the program. And at the conclusion of that hearing, the district declared, or ordered, the abatement of all properties on the list to be completed by April 30th, and to be maintained through the end of the fire season. After April 30th, the Weed Abatement Program, my staff, conducted inspections throughout the, the fire district, and determined which properties were and were not compliant. Fortunately, the fire district did a wonderful job. We had less than a dozen properties that were noncompliant for this year, which is extraordinary. Then we come to the third step, the final step, which is to ask for the opportunity to put those charges through to the tax collector to collect the fees, to recover our costs, to pay our bills for the work that we do. This, of course, is a public hearing where property owners get an opportunity to tell you why they feel they shouldn't have to pay those fees, and we tell you why they feel they should, and you get to rule on that. And at the end, you'll submit an order that will declare whatever changes are made to the list, and I submit that to the tax collector for collection.
All right. Thank you, Mo. Thank you, Weed Abatement Manager Kumray. We will now open the public hearing. The time is 7:09 PM. Please note that if any members of the public would like to contest the inclusion of their name or personal number in Exhibit A of Resolution 20-24, a resolution of the Board of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District adopting weed abatement report and ordering cost of abatement to be a special assessment on the prospective properties, now is the time to do so. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. The time is 7:10 PM. All right, we will now move on to item 4B, Resolution 20-24. Resolution of the Board of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District adopting weed abatement report and ordering cost of abatement to be a special assessment on the respective properties. We, are there any clarifying questions from the commission? So, we, the staff switched up the script, the process we're doing. So, if there's any questions at this time, staff or commissioners, go ahead and feel, go ahead and ask them, and I won't do a roll call. We'll only do the roll call when we actually do the vote. So, are there any questions from the commissioners?
One question, which is, has there been any issue from any of the homeowners in terms of not being able to get their properties taken care of, just because of not being able to get resources to clean up for them, or to remove materials, or to not get workers? Or have we seen, is it, how is it different from last year, if at all?
Well, statistically speaking, it's not been a problem in, in the district, because, again, you have less than a dozen properties that weren't compliant at the time of the inspection. So, apparently, they're finding the people to take care of the work. We found very few properties that needed to be done when we arrived. I think it was, I think it was only nine.
All right, thank you, Roger. Anything else? Any other questions? All right, I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording.
Price requests the motion to be of number 2024 approved.
And Tyson to second.
Second. And Tyson with the second. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Is there any additional public comment on this item? Hearing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote on the resolution. District Clerk Vargas, please.
Thank you. President Warren.
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Sprehn.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney.
Yes.
And the motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, and as requested, I'm going to announce my departure from the meeting.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to item five, Essential Government Functions Update. Item 5A, Santa Clara County Public Health Orders. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, President Warren. The slides before you are for item 5A are displayed on the screen and in the Agenda Packet Materials. They're up on the screen.
We're not seeing your screen, Jay.
Uh, I think.
Yeah, we're not seeing the screen.
Sarah, you have a, there we go.
There we go.
I need my personal assistant to get them on the screen. Okay. The most recent Santa Clara County Health Order was revised on July 2nd and implemented July 13th. Summary of the County Health Officer Dr. Cody's statement that you see before you is, "The challenge is, we cannot go back to life in 2019. We need to adapt to that new reality." July's order offers long-term containment strategies to remain in place for the upcoming months. And then Slide 2 provides excerpts from the order. Those excerpts include, "Staying home is the best way to reduce risk. When outside residents comply with social distancing, wear face coverings, wash and sanitize hands. Businesses require workers to work from home whenever possible and to go to work only for job duties they can't complete at home. Limits on indoor and outdoor gatherings plus social distancing are defined. Density limitations are defined. Businesses and agencies must report COVID-19 positive tests of persons. Businesses must comply with state stay-at-home orders, and business sections take the risk in a reduction approach. Media messages from the health, from the county health are more pointed recently on wearing masks and the risk of spreading to others in vulnerable populations. Los Altos Hills Town and City of Los Altos are planning drop-in testing sites again in the next few weeks. I would like to encourage the commission and the public to check the County Health Department website dashboard. The updates are quite enlightening as to the health risk associated with COVID-19. And as of today, Santa Clara County is one of the counties still on the state monitoring list. I understand 50% of the counties are on that list. So, we are now under the auspices of state guidelines. Thank you. End of my report.
All right, thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Yes, from Commissioner Tyson. I'd just like to note, in support of what General Manager Logan said, that the Los Altos Hills will have our next pop-up, our testing on Friday, August 7th, and it's by appointment only. So, you'll see more details as it gets closer.
Thank you, Judge. Any other comments, questions? All right. We will now move on to item six, the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Management Audit Update. Item 6A, Santa Clara County Finance and Government Operations Committee Hearing of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Management Audit Report will be on August 27th at 20, 2020 at 9:30 AM. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, President Warren. The district management audit report was scheduled for a hearing at the Finance and Government Operations Committee, known as the FGOC, on June 25th. At the request of District 5 Supervisor Semidion, the item was moved to the August 27th meeting of FGOC at 9:30 AM. The district commission ad hoc management audit subcommittee and designated staff will make its presentation at the August 27th meeting. And I do believe that meeting will hold and that that hearing will take place. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, this is Alan Epstein. I'd like to ask if the commission is undertaking any additional work in preparation for that meeting, and if so, if they would describe what work is being performed. Thank you.
Hey, would you address that?
Yeah, let me just comment. I wouldn't particularly call it work. We are meeting to discuss what various options there are, reviewing the report, getting prepared for the presentation on the 27th, who's going to be the speakers. So, it's more of a logistics, but it's not any research looking into matters or anything like that, if that answers the question. And maybe District Counsel Siegel would like to speak to that, if there's anything that he would like to add to it. Or, Mark, you as president, I don't know.
No, I think that's humorous to Jay. Alan, we're just preparing for the meeting on the 27th.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
All right, we'll now move on to item seven, Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. 7A, the monthly report of June 2020. Assistant Fire Chief Glass, please provide the report.
All right, good evening, President. Commissioners, members of staff, and the public. I am on vacation and having some internet check on, so I'm going to try sharing the video. If you can't hear me, just let me know, and I'll turn it off for bandwidth. But, we had a pretty, pretty uneventful June, which I'm happy to say. Notes can events to report, if we can advance to the second slide. So, we had, sorry, let me pull it up on my screen. Absolutely no late calls this, this month, which I'm happy to report. Looks like the COVID in place in the shelter, shelter, COVID-19 in shelter in place order are continuing to help us out. It appears that all of our responses for Code 3 within the urban density method response time, as well as the rural. And we had 62 total calls for the month of June. And we would have had two educational programs. I'm not sure where the attendee number comes from, but both of those were canceled due to COVID-19. Dollar loss $50 was due to a plastic container residential fire, and oil was first due on Los Altos Hills. And other than that, we're on track. 356 calls in 2020. We're doing really well. And the map outlines where the total volume of calls were. And again, the term "fire" with all the red dots is a little bit confusing. We didn't actually have that many fires. They get dispatched as fires, and then when populated the red dots, we didn't actually have that many fires. You can see along the 280 corridor actually turned out to be ours. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions that the commissioners or staff might have.
Any questions from the commission? Are there any, is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. Assistant Chief Glass, Glass, were you leaving the call?
Yeah, there is no further need for me to remain on the call. All of you have good evening.
Thank you, Chief Glass. Enjoy your vacation. All right, we'll now move on to item eight, General Manager Update.
Thank you, President Warren.
All right.
The General Manager.
Good, Jay.
Okay, thank you. The General Manager and Special Project Service Consultant slide presentation is displayed. The title page photo are of the demonstration of the district fire hydrants connecting equipment that includes lateral pipes and gate valves. The demonstration was recreated later from this demonstration for video, you can see that in the center photo, to display at a future commission meeting, and for public education and outreach, and for a training workshop. So, with that, that's the introduction to the title page. And now I'm going to turn it over to Special Project Services Consultant Sarah Hendricks to talk about the next series of slides, and discuss the improvements to the district website since the last commission meeting, and the final, and I do mean final, okay, sign and letter to be sent to residents. So, Sarah, it's all yours.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Good evening, commissioners. So, I'll start with some revisions that we've made to the district website. As General Manager Logan has mentioned in the past, the ultimate goal here is really to streamline the site by providing infographics, pictures, charts, and short videos accompanied by brief sentences or bullets, to really help simplify the message that we're trying to get across, because our website right now is very content-heavy. I would imagine that a lot of people might visit our site and say, "Nope, I'm not reading all this. It's too much information." I'm sure there are others who are excited to read it and to just soak in all of that information. But I think the general public is really looking for those quick snippets right now. So, one of the updates that we've made to the emergency prep, basic emergency preparedness page, is by adding the infographics about the Santa Clara County Fire Ready, Set, Go program. We've also linked to that program. So, they have some great infographics here about how you can get your home ready in case of a fire, preparing both your, your land and hardscaping, and then also preparing emergency packs, and having an evacuation plan, and different routes of egress, you know, so that if there is an emergency, you know what to do, you know how to get out, you know how to ultimately do your best to save yourselves and your property. We've also updated some of the broken links on this page. There were quite a few, so I've gone through those with some help from staff to really make sure that all of those links are directing people to the right information. The second major update that we've done is add the Disaster Ready Guide to the Emergency Prep, Preparing for Emergencies page. The Disaster Ready Guide is a guide that's brought to you by the Social Bridging Project, which is a project with Santa Clara County and Listos, California. This project will be reaching out to members of the community in Santa Clara County who are 60 and older, to ask questions about how they're doing, if there are resources that they might need to be connected to during this pandemic. And they'll be getting that information from the registered voters. Additionally, they'll be reaching out to all registered voters in the state, but specifically in Santa Clara County for this, this particular project, and asking them how, how they're preparing for a disaster, and offering to provide them with this Disaster Ready Guide. So, they'll actually mail them a hard copy, but we have it here on the website, so people can access it at any time. Finally, we've also added a vegetation management page to our resident program site. This, right now, is kind of a placeholder, so we have information about best practices for vegetation management. We direct people to the Fire Safe Council Shelter, Shelter in Yard program. And we also have the Santa Clara County Community Wildfire Protection Program, Protection Plan link on the site, as well as the district's addendum to the revised Annex IV. In the future, we're hoping that this is going to be a landing page for some of those informational videos that General Manager Logan was talking about. And one thing that I actually don't have a slide about, but want to point out, is that we had some very great help from the Santa Clara Fire County Fire Department updating our program area map. That map is now accessible on both of our brush chipping pages. It's much more legible. I think people are really going to have a much easier time figuring out what program area they live in. That's a really common question that we get, is how the heck am I supposed to make heads or tails of this map and figure out what program area I am in? I'm calling Cory and leaving her a message, because I don't know where I live on this map, because it's horrible. So, now we have a really beautiful map. Thank you to Paul Morgan for working on that for us, and his, I think he volunteered some interns for that as well. So, I'll move on now to the okay card and cover letter. As General Manager Logan mentioned, we've gone through many iterations of this, this card, but we, I think we have finalized it. So, as we mentioned in the June meeting, we've developed a card that simply states "okay." And so, this is operating with the assumption that people who really need help are going to actively seek it out. We're hoping that the card will relieve some of the burden on first responders and certs who may be canvassing the district after a disaster. The backside of the card also includes information about how to use a fire extinguisher, and how to turn off your electricity and gas, as well as radio stations that you can monitor in case of a disaster. The accompanying, accompanying cover letter talks about how to use the card, how to post it, as well as resources for preparing for a disaster, social media information, and what to do after, after a disaster. The next steps are for the card, or is to determine the distribution method. So, we previously discussed printing a limited number of copies, and providing a link on the website, so people can download and print it if they're interested. If that is the way that we want to go, of course, we would include that information in the cover letter. We would also provide copies of the signs to Town Hall, to the Parks and Rec Department, and at different town events. If that's, well, we'll do that either way, actually. And then at the commission's request at the last meeting, we also looked into some pricing for printing and distributing the signs. So, our printer estimates $2,850 for 3,500 signs, which would be printed on cover stock and laminated. The signs would also have two to three holes punched in the side for hanging, at the suggestion of some of the commissioners. But, that, that pricing does not include any sort of twine or other method to affix the sign to a gate or mailbox. And the cost also does not include printing the cover letters or mailing the packages. Finally, as General Manager Logan alluded to, we've been looking into hiring a videographer. I'll just give a, she talked about this at the beginning, about the first project, where we actually completed filming on the 22nd, so last week. And it's basically a replication of the demonstration that General Manager Logan discussed. The second proposed project is a video demonstrating vegetation management practices, showing before and after shots, footage of crews clearing vegetation, and drone footage before, during, and after a cleanup. And then finally, the last proposed project is the Saddle Mountain Neighborhood Evacuation Workshop and Drill, which would be kind of a hybrid of a Zoom recording of the evacuation workshop, a Q&amp;A with our experts, and then combined footage from the actual drill. And I don't know if General Manager Logan or Emergency Services Manager Gluhan have anything to add to that. If so, go ahead. If not, I'll turn it over to General Manager Logan for the budget update.
Okay.
Any questions?
I just wanted to mention that we did very quick vetting of videographers, and the Jackson Ricketts popped up, because he was a resident of Los Altos. And so, Sarah and I did some vetting. We gave Jason, Jackson, a call, and very impressed with his background and excitement about working with the fire district versus maybe videoing fashion shows or weddings. So, we thought, okay, this is a good, good match. And it's turned out to be a delightful experience, because time was of the essence. We needed to get back out there and videotape what we We needed to get back out there and videotape what we had seen as a demonstration, which is depicted in this photo, for two reasons. Number one, all the equipment was blocking the drive aisle and trucks couldn't get through. And secondly, they were starting to use the equipment that was on display back in the field. So when we got out there, they had already cannibalized part of the equipment and it was already underground. So we knew we needed to work fast. So I used my general manager authority, entered into an agreement with Jackson Ricketts, and we have a video that's in production. And with that, maybe I can have Captain Gluhan, if she has any comments she wants to make about this whole video that we did because she was a part of the video team that was out there. Denise, any comments you want to make?
Sure. If my audio is poor, please let me know. Good evening, Commissioners and the public and staff. Thank you for coming tonight. Yeah, not my comfort zone to be on video, but I put my big girl pants on and I did help with the reenactment. I think it's going to be very beneficial. We're looking at probably three segments out of this first primary hydrant video for different audiences, but a general public as the overall audience. And then specifically on different portions of the infrastructure and the relationship with, for it to be, since this COVID environment and physical distancing is going to be, I think, a reality for at least the rest of, obviously, 2020 and maybe into 2021. We've had to really relook at how we can reach our goals and priorities by using alternate methods, which has a silver lining of having a historical bank of information that we can store and access in the future. So I think that it is going to be something that we might not have done had we have not been pushed with the COVID environment as soon. I think it was something in our minds, but we really didn't have a reason yet. So I think it's a great direction for the district to move in. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then the last slide has to do with the adoption budget timeline and budget hearings. Those are in August. That's with the county board of supervisors. You've seen this slide multiple times. It's still the same date as the last two months. And so I would just point out that the district did submit its budget. It was approved in the county executive's recommended budget as it was submitted. That was on June 23rd. So we're operating under that budget now. And then August 17th through 21st, we'll start the county budget hearings before the board supervisors, led by the county executive. On August 19th will be when the hearing is for fire districts. That would be county fire, South County Fire, and Los Altos Hills County Fire District. And then August 25th, at a regular meeting of the board of supervisors, they will adopt the 2021 fiscal county budget. So that's the budget timeline. And if you'd be interested in that, I'll give reports as we go through. And that concludes my reports. Thank you, Mr. President.
And General Manager Logan, is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. We'll now move on to item nine, Emergency Services Management Update. All right, moving on to you, Captain Gluhan.
Thank you again. And Sarah will be getting my slides up. There's a slight bit of redundancy in some of my slides, you know, for obvious reasons. Jay and I work, General Manager Logan and I work closely together on a lot of this development. But again, this is a little bit of the, an alternate picture of the, kind of, as General Manager Logan said, they actually had taken down some of the props. So this is a picture of that on the left. And then on the right are some brochures that I'm going to talk about, that were just some covers of brochures that were handed out during our evacuation workshop that we had last week. Next slide. So as typically, I go through the events and activities that I've attended. The first section here are either weekly or monthly regularly scheduled meetings. Attended today, actually, the CERT meeting. Victoria is on vacation, so I will be covering for her this evening, our technical services consultant. So I covered for her at the meeting today. Lots of interesting information. Everybody's in the same position, basically, that we've already described of figuring out what it looks like moving forward. Currently, all CERT academies that are provided through county fire, because they have canceled their community education outreach, are canceled for the rest of the year as it stands, unless they develop a hybrid online and somehow are able to do the skills and final activities. The Fire Safe Council meetings, again, a wealth of knowledge of details that are going on inside the county. Got a really good update about the fires that happened and the unprecedented amount of fires that happened on the Fourth of July from Battalion Chief Falarski. And also, just in general, activities and fires that are happening throughout the state and the ramifications of those fires. The PIO meeting has also been a really helpful place to get some of the messaging that we've provided tonight and also that Sarah's been able to put on our website. So it's been a great media package that they've been sending out to give us some of the updates. Some additional upcoming meetings in the possibility that we don't have an August commission meeting. So I just wanted to throw this in. Commissioner Price has arranged for Commissioner Kearney and I to present at the September A Los Altos Hills Club meeting. That will be remote Zoom format. I believe we mentioned last month that JR Call, who was our project manager for Fire Safe Council, did retire. It was a little bit of a speedy retirement, so we didn't have a lot of time to talk to what things look like moving forward. For the interim, Jim Young, who's a former battalion chief with county fire, is our interim project manager. We have talked by phone about some of our goals and objectives, and we are planning a meeting next week to actually sit down and talk about some of the items. And as General Manager Logan mentioned, the property, we're looking at possibly doing some videography on our property that the district owns to do a little bit of property hygiene demonstration and videography of that. And then, obviously, our Phase Two of the shaded fuel break on Page Mill Road is on the top of our list of things to get back on a schedule and get completed. And then also other discussions that will fit in with our eventual strategic planning, what we'd like to do with projects moving forward inside of our fire district and our collaboration with Fire Safe Council. What are the projects? Can I go back just for a second? I mean, the last two points on that last, I should have mine up. Sorry, Sarah, on my own computer. And then just the upcoming other video discussions that we've already mentioned, the evacuation workshop. We do have a Zoom recording of our last week's training, but we are looking to do a professional recording of that. Okay, Sarah, thank you. So moving on to some of the other events and activities. I've mentioned phases of this evacuation drill in our past meetings. Basically, we had our, we're through Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One was a planning meeting. It's a collaboration with the town, Fire Safe Council, county fire, and the sheriff's department. We had a remote presentation of the evacuation workshop, which is usually a real networking in-person style workshop. But unfortunately, due to the physical distancing, we had to have it first time presented by Eugenia Rendler as a remote presentation. So we did record that on Zoom. We're going to go back and record a formal presentation and incorporate some of Zoom and the formal presentation in one of our videos. Our third phase will be the actual evacuation exercise, and the dates are being decided. Currently, Marcia Hovey from the town is going to send out a doodle selection to the residents that have said that they would be involved to pick their most preferred of four dates. That will coincide with B shift. Battalion Chief Thomasetti has gone out to Saddle Mountain, done a pre-plan on it, and picked a couple of residences that he would like to do a drill with three engines as a reality component to the evacuation exercise. And then the final phase will be a review of the event. We'll do a hot wash with the residents themselves and everybody that is participating that day. And then we'll do a follow-up report on findings and kind of gap analysis and what we've learned and perspectives of moving forward and doing this in other neighborhoods in Los Altos Hills. So I'm going to move on to the next item on my report, and that's the progress of our operational data collection, integration of mapping. Sarah's given some updates on that already, but I'm going to ask if she would give a little bit more information about what we have currently going on in that program development. Sarah?
Great. Thank you, Captain Gluhan. So as mentioned at the June meeting, district staff has been meeting with multiple vendors to discuss the GIS and mapping services. We most recently met with Patrick Kelleher of Lynx Technologies, who's on the call with us tonight to discuss the project. Lynx provides the GIS services for the town of Los Altos Hills, and they worked very hard to create an accurate parcel-based map for the town. Lynx also provides GIS services to Los Gatos, Gilroy, and other cities in the Bay Area. They have provided a project proposal, which was included in your package. The proposal includes digitizing our existing maps and integrating them with existing data from other agencies, for example, the town, Santa Clara County Fire, Fire Safe Council. It also includes developing a website for us to host the data and ongoing maintenance for data administration and management. Lynx has demonstrated experience with developing ready-to-use GIS systems, and we believe it's a pretty reasonable cost as well. Staff is asking for direction from the commission on how to proceed, ideally by developing a contract with Lynx to bring back at the next meeting for approval. Additionally, as noted in the proposal, the district will need to choose between a Lynx hosted site and an ESRI or ArcGIS online hosted site. The pricing is provided in the proposal, but it's worth noting that the ESRI option will have a $1,500 annual licensing fee each year, in addition to the ongoing maintenance costs that are included in the proposal. Additionally, the three tasks that are presented in the proposal are not separable. So there's no point in really having Lynx develop our data and base maps if we don't also have them create a GIS site for us. And we don't have the expertise on staff to manage that data, so we really would need to also include that ongoing maintenance. And Patrick, you're on the call, I believe. If there's anything you'd like to add or anything about your background that you want to share with the commission, that would be great.
No, I'm open to questions. I've been around for a very long time. So I've actually had experience with county fire for many years. And I think we actually worked for the fire district at one point. But I can share the Los Altos Hills website if you're interested in seeing it. Otherwise, I'm just open to answer any questions you have.
So President Warren, I don't know if you want to do questions now or if you want to wait until that is done.
Yeah, so we're going to pause the Emergency Services Manager update. So let's, you know, cover this topic. So the question to the commissioners here is we really need to get a sense of the commission. The staff's been pursuing the GIS initiative, and we're now to the point that we have a proposal in front of us. And so I want to take this opportunity to get the, have the commission, you know, ask questions and to, I want to wrap this up, I want to get a sense from the commission. Is the staff headed in the right direction such that we could move forward at the next meeting with an actual contract? Or do we need to trim the sails and have them adjust the trajectory in which they're moving? So at this point, let's open up to the commission for any questions or clarification that they would like to, you know, ask.
Okay, this is Duffy speaking, Price speaking. I think this is outstanding. And what I've seen happen here and the ability to respond to the Parisma Hills Water District producing a video is fantastic because we thought that's a great educational opportunity. It's too darn bad that we didn't have the audit committee seeing how we're interconnected with Parisma Hills Water District. Invaluable. I mean, it was terrific. So I'm glad to see that moving forward, and thanks to Jay and team for getting that going. The other thing is the Saddle Mountain evacuation exercise. I'll just speak to that for a minute. I have had a conversation recently with the town.
Duffy?
Yes.
Duffy, I want to pause you for a second. I want to limit the scope of the conversation at the moment. We're just talking about the GIS proposal at the moment.
Oh, sure. Okay, that sounds great. I'm all for it. Go for it. We need it. Definitely good.
Thank you.
And by the way, I want to say I love their logo. Lynx, hold on a second. Lynx, your logo is terrific. I love it. At any rate, now can we talk about Saddle Mountain?
Now, I want to get the rest of the commission about GIS system, the GIS proposal. Thanks, Duffy. Hold that question. We'll get to it.
Okay, no problem.
Any other commissioners' questions, comments on the GIS proposal? Because we want to know if we should come back at the next meeting with an actual contract.
Looks like Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Screen both have things they'd like to say.
I have a question.
Janice?
Yeah, that's GIS project. Will it involve the unincorporated area? I didn't hear a mention of that. I just heard Los Altos Hills.
Yes, it will.
And also the evacuation exercise, same question.
The evacuation exercise is specifically for Saddle Mountain area. Denise, is that incorporated?
Yes. I'll answer more evacuation questions after, but yes, it would. Eventually, we could do neighborhoods outside of the incorporated town of Los Altos Hills in the unincorporated. Currently, it's just Saddle Mountain under planning.
Thank you.
Okay.
Roger?
Yeah, I'll just mention that I've had a chance to look over the GIS proposals during this month. They ran by me and I, having been a critic of the GIS or a cautious GIS project person in the past, I think that this is a very coherent proposal. It's also based upon a company, for those of you who don't know, Lynx, who has done the work for the town of Los Altos Hills and has actually straightened out all the GIS data to make it actually usable by the town in all its planning processes. So in this case, the district will be able to stand on the shoulders of the town's work, the work that Lynx did for the town to have usable, credible GIS data. So I think it makes sense. It's reasonable. There's some decisions to make on the way, which we don't have to make tonight, but I think it's been, they've taken wise steps with it. I'll support it going forward. I know it's getting ahead of things, but I just want everyone else to know that since I've had a chance to look at this before this.
Thanks, Roger. Any other questions from commissioners?
We have Commissioner Tyson, and also it looks like a member of the public.
All right, George?
Thank you very much. And Patrick, thanks very much for your presentation. You may not be aware that Commissioner Screen and I are both on the city council. We saw your presentation this last month, and so we're getting kind of a double dose. And the thing that I just wanted to echo, or I think Roger said, was the synergies of working and to make sure that we don't have a duplication of effort with the city, but also that we're able to build on the results makes it a stronger proposal, to the extent we can do that.
So, thank you.
Thank you, George. All right, from the public?
Yes, we have Neil and Alan. Neil, why don't you go first?
Okay, thank you. I had a question about, I understand if it's hosted on ESRI, what kinds of things would be available? You know, there are both data sources as well as end user maps you can make. If you host it yourself, though, beyond the maps themselves, what data sources would you make available?
From my perspective, that the data availability will be driven by the district themselves. So whatever they tell me to expose to the public, I will do so.
Well, I understand you could easily, well, probably easily make a shape file or a KML. But if you wanted to make something a data source importable by ESRI, you know, as a data service, would that be one of the things you would do? Or would that not be part of it if you hosted it yourself?
If we hosted ourselves, you would have the ability to extract portions of the data as a shape file. That would probably be throttled. So you wouldn't be able to scrape an entire layer, for example. It would be limited to a certain number of records, but you'd be able to export that into a common format that can be used by virtually any GIS or CAD system that's published out there. So there also will be the ability to make your own maps based on created fine. So there also will be the ability to make your own maps based on pre-defined templates that will in part be kind of out of the box, but also customized as driven by our district staff. So those would typically be in a PDF form, but they're also spatially referenced. So, so for example, they could be overlayed over other data that's, has geospatial information. So both raster and vector formats would be available to, to the public as driven by the fire district's sort of release of that information. We'd also, potentially, we could have this as part of an open data portal, but that's, that's maybe getting a little bit too detailed at this point, but, but that's also another option.
As I understand Neil's question, I think he's asking, is, is the decision of where we host it, will that limit our functionality for creating custom maps?
Um, so in an ArcGIS online environment, typically, what you see is the ability to sort of drive your own maps. But that, that ability would also be true if I hosted, so I guess my, my, my quick answer is no. No, you'd be able to extract data, you'd be able to create your own maps, you'd be able to use different base maps. I can't see the shortcomings there, if I understand the question correctly.
Mark, can I make a response?
Yeah. Sure, Neil.
So again, I don't understand what's being offered at your site, but one of the things that would concern me, if it's an export model where I have to make a shape file and then re-import it, I can't have maps live update if we update the commission's data sources. Like the zones or one of the layers we want to be able to have is active search, which is we have now as an overlay layer. And I know we can get that if we host it on ESRI. And that's a valuable feature so that you don't have stale maps. Your maps update in real time as you update the underlying data source. And so my question for you is, and I know we get that quote for free, unquote, from ESRI. But if we, if we don't pay the ESRI license and we have you hosted, it sounds like live updates aren't a problem, aren't a possibility unless you add a date, a portal of some type.
Well, I mean, see, that's getting into maybe a separate conversation, but, but, but there are different ways to interact with the map itself, so depending on your, the, the nature of your question. As an example, if you had an Excel file with, with address-based information and the fire district wanted to enable that tool for the public consumption, then you'd be able to add that Excel document and map it automatically. So there's also tools available if I host it that would allow you to interact with the map. So it is not one directional, it is two directional, but that, that's going to be really driven by the fire district and what types of functionality they want to enable. So if, if you're familiar with a lot of the background engine, we're using ESRI's ArcGIS server and a third-party application by a company called Latitude Geographics called GeoCortex. This is, it's a, it's a very popular vendor. Santa Clara County is actively using it for their site. San Mateo County is also using it. There's, there's probably about 15, 20 different counties in California alone that are using GeoCortex as well as a number of different cities. So you can, you can go to their website if you want to look at some more information, but it's, it's, it's a pretty sweet tool, but no, I don't mean to get too far with this, but, but at the same time, I don't necessarily have a skin in, in this game in the sense that if the district decides to go with ArcGIS online, I'm absolutely fine with that. It's a great tool. If you want to have me do it.
So what I must suggest here is that, so Sarah, you'll contact Neil and capture his questions and, you know, his input, so that, you know, as the staff develops a proposal, we can address, you know, the questions that Neil has. I think that'd be helpful.
Will do.
All right, Neil, anything else? Run around to Alan.
My questions were similar in nature. I guess I, I would suggest backing up and trying to establish what it is the goal of having this G I S system is. And once that goal was established and how it's going to be used and how it's going to be maintained, then I think one can determine which of these options should be, should be selected. The concern always with a G I S system is who's going to populate the system and who's going to maintain it? And then lastly, how is it's going to be used? And I think if you answer those questions, then the answer to which way will probably fall out. But I think the consultant should make a recommendation as to which one would be appropriate after he sees the goals and objectives of the program.
Thank you, Alan. All right, any other questions from the public? Okay, so what I want to do here is I want to get a sense from the commission to provide guidance to the, the staff. Are they moving in the right direction? How do we want to see them adjust on this project? Duffy, any input on the G I S?
Oh, G I S? No, I like it though. I like where we're going.
All right. Terry, any, anything to add to the discussion on G I S?
Yeah, I may have missed it. Thank you, President Warren. I may have missed it, but is there any sort of guidance on what the overall cost of this is going to be? Sort of for the year?
Yes, there's that proposal in your package. I can pull it up. I think I have it open.
Page three of the Lynx proposal has all the costs.
Yeah.
Got it, got it.
Yep. Okay. Roger, anything?
Yeah, my only comment comes from, I think having Neil involved at this stage would be good to make those final decisions on, because he's going to be one of the big users of it. I think his experience with this kind of thing will be very helpful in specifying the possible uses, how CERT would use it, both for keeping zone maps, keeping location maps. I think having his involvement as a decision in this particular, how we're going to host it, what user interface features we want from it, I think would be very well, be great to have Neil closer involved on that.
Thanks, Roger. George?
Nothing further from me, thank you.
Melvin?
I believe that we should also have Neil involved as well. He sounds like a subject matter expert and so the more knowledgeable people we have involved in the decision-making in the process, the better off I think we'll be overall. So I agree with Roger 100%, so that's it.
Thanks, Melvin. Janice?
I was wondering if there might be objections from the citizens regarding privacy.
That's actually a good question and I think that, again, that's, that's an internal decision for you guys to make, but, and I've seen both ends of the spectrum respond to it. Los Gatos, as an example, does not release owner name. Other cities do, and the argument goes both ways where that since the owner's name comes from an outside agency, i.e. the assessor, they should be directed to the assessor's office to get that official data if they want it. The flip side to that argument is it's already a matter of public record. And so we're trying to serve the public and this is the best way to do that. Again, it's, it's, it's a, it's the district's decision. I go based on what you tell me to do. Otherwise, the other data, things like parcels, streets, certs, we see that as helping the public as opposed to providing any kind of risk or, or exposure to them. Other situations that might be particularly sensitive, like at the city level, we typically do not show anything underground for safety concerns. But again, the way the, the data is provided allows the district to determine that at a feature level. So they will drive what is considered sensitive or appropriate for public exposure.
All right, so I think that's part of the, part of the proposal that the staff needs to come back with is, you know, how will address privacy concerns? All right, so to summarize, I think that the sense that I got from the commission and, and direction to the staff is that, you know, you're, you're on track, you're going in the right direction. You know, please make sure that when we come back with a contract proposal, that it includes our goals and objectives for, you know, what, you know, what we're going to achieve with, with the system. How we address the public privacy concerns and, you know, and the, you know, the aspects of, the technical aspects that Neil was bringing up. So Neil, thank you for, you know, bringing up these concerns. So I think there's, your staff, you've got clear direction on this?
Think so, yes. An excellent discussion. Yeah. Thank you, Neil. Thank you. And Roger. And everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go back to, now we've done the proposal, then we're going to go back to the emergency services update and finish up with the cert activities.
Yes, thank you. And I did a, there's a mistake. Was I, did I mention I'm passionate about evacuation? It's mentioned here again. I've already covered that. So for the next slide, that's, so we're organizing, this is a picture of the ARC before we leave this slide. One of the update things that we're talking about, but we'll obviously have to interface with the college, is painting it to maybe match that same color of the administration building behind it. It also is due for a little bit of freshening up, so that'll be a future item here in the near future. Access onto the Hill campus continues to be under the rules of COVID and medical screening, health screening prior to coming on. We're working, continuing working on scheduling projects and training around the ARC's revitalization. Next slide. So this is where I said I had a duplication, skip the phase one through four up there at the top. I've already discussed that. There has been a new awning installed. You can see, we were originally going to move it to the other side, but because of the pathway, bicycle traffic and whatnot, we were concerned with the hazard of hitting the awning. So it was left in place. Originally, the talk was to move it. They've been refreshing the bins. A lot of the bins have, have items that are stale, have had to be replaced. We've had several, many volunteers come out to help with the various projects. We've also been inventorying and doing an analysis of the needs of the trailers and starting up maintenance schedules for those trailers. Some of the upcoming projects that we're looking to take care of in the near future is getting the Wi-Fi conductivity, ham radio items. We have been in conversation with Chief Glass and Mr. Snow, who's their facilities manager, about how to move forward with those projects. So we'll be getting that underway and most of that's coming up here in the next, first week of August. Next slide. So where are we at in terms, oops, one more back. That's, that's the cool one at the end. Yay. So CERT supervisors have expressed an interest. Out of some of the training we've been doing on our weekly CERT check-in meetings, we've been providing the, going off our CERT website on the different positions in an activation that people might occupy. So we've discussed that they'd like to have that maybe video graphed, either simulating it with supervisors and then having a scripted description of the activities that they're doing during that. Again, what, what can we do in this COVID environment to get people up to speed without actually physically meeting or meeting in small groups? The trailer inside the ARC is obviously tight quarters, a little bit harder to do the physical distancing. So we have to keep our numbers small on any activities we do there. So we're going to start working on that. That won't be with the professional videographer. This will be more of the iPhone Zoom type format for that. One of the other transitions we're making, because COVID has gone so much longer, as the president had suggested, we didn't think we'd be doing this in August, so we've moved from doing weekly meetings to doing a CERT supervisor meeting on the third Wednesday of the month, which was our, our traditional CERT supervisor meeting. And then we're having a CERT general meeting in the first week of the month. These are our goals. They haven't been set exactly yet because we're just transitioning and pivoting to this new format. And then we'll have training sessions left for the second and fourth weeks of the month. And then one of the final things, after each of the CERT updates, I would send out a summary. And we're in the process of formalizing that summary into something similar to what you see on the right here as a CERT newsletter. We're working on the final, going to get a little bit more of staff's approval and a little more input on some of the items on there. It's a electronic document that's mostly all hyperlinks. So it's basically just taking the summary information and hyperlinking for everybody and all the certs to look at. Eventually, that will be edited a little bit to go into the website, to go into the updated areas that project manager Hendricks has talked about earlier. And our final slide. And this is our yay slide. I know, drum roll please.
Yay.
Yay. We got all our boxes in just yesterday for the vest, so they are now done. This is what they look like. This is the final version. We are working on a distribution plan. Obviously, we had a very robust, what would I say, 80 people would like to receive a new vest. I don't know that we've ever had 80 people at any training. So we're going to work on some sort of a distribution process that incorporates some training with the distribution. One of the things we're looking at doing is preparing an education recording, a refresher. Last year, we did the traffic and crowd control, which is a FEMA module in the CERT program. So doing some kind of refresher that people have to see, since this is a traffic-related item, a vest, it did get a little refresher. And then maybe some other component with that to add a little participation into the distribution. The vest will most likely be distributed and stored out of the El Monte Station unless that becomes a problem. And then we'll probably work over out of the ARC. We're looking at the first and second weeks of August to get started. And I think that ends my presentation, except for any questions. I know there are a few pending.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
Hi.
Questions on the evacuation plan?
Can I go now? Are you ready? Sorry about that. Anyway, I'm talking about your Saddle Mountain evacuation exercise. Your phase three would be, I would make the suggestion, it's a great opportunity if you're going to have other services coalesce on that exercise to have the information relayed to the town crier. And you could either do that, you know, whether you want to do it at the same time, have coverage with the person that reports on Los Altos Hills is Megan Winslow. Do you know her, Denise? She would probably be delighted.
I have met her. Yeah, I have met her.
She could cover you. And basically, I think it's a very good thing, especially because you're going to combine services. You said you might have three fire apparatus there. I mean, that would be pretty good for the fire department also. But very good, and it would give, point out what's available, you know, to our residents in terms of the exercise and would be a great educational experience. So that's my thought when I saw you were doing that with Saddle Mountain.
Thank you. And we will, we will also have a link on our website and the town's website explaining some of the details so that, you know, because we are going to activate via NICSIL or Alert SCC, saying this is a training only. And we'd like to interface with county fires PIO. And we'd like to interface with county fires PIO, uh, staff, uh, public information officer staffs to also, and maybe even get some media coverage depending on, uh, the, the sense of, in addition to like a town choir prior media coverage.
Right. That sounds great. Good job. And by the way, just generally, great job on the training programs. Victoria is doing a great job. The last one I attended a couple of weeks ago, where she showed about how to put the gloves on and how to take them off. I mean, it was little stuff like that that is really outstanding. So thanks a lot to her too. And you both were doing great job.
Again, struggling for items that we can still teach in this environment is, has been a little bit challenging. So we're getting there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Thanks Duffy. Other questions from the commissioners? Any? All right. Thank you, Captain.
Okay. And just really quick, I wanted to, just real quick for Sarah for helping with all finishing up the, uh, and Dave for finishing up the uh, cert vests. That was a, a, a long, long project that took a lot of much like the help okay sign. Took a lot of, uh, input to come to that final product. So thank you very much for all the commissioners that helped out. Um, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Kearney, I know had, uh, Commissioner Carr. So thank you very much. And for the commission for okaying and for just seeing them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to item 10, the hazardous fuel reduction update. There's the slides. 10A brush chipping and debris removal program pilot project preliminary analysis area four, five, and six. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Okay. Thank you, President Warren. Uh, the slides displays three months now of the financial picture and three months of deliverables of the brush chipping pilot project. And in slide one, you'll see the March column. And that column represents, uh, this startup preparation for the launch of chipping in April. So as soon as April came, we were ready to start chipping. It also displays the pre-funding for the program. And then the April and May and June columns displays the amount of the awarded bid for each of the three weeks. So each week, the, uh, chipping piles a bid. And it displays the Fire Safe Council program expenses. It's going to be really interesting to watch the data evolve in the coming months. Uh, and then I'm going to turn it over to Special Project Services Consultant Sarah Hendricks to comment on slides two and three, which are the program data. So Sarah, pitch it to you.
Great. Uh, so the next two slides are the program sort of operational data from April, May, and June. Um, as you can see, you know, we've reviewed this before. April was really the first month that we had this program, this pilot program in place. Um, so that I think we can chalk some of the low, the low number of residences and the low num, low, um, volume of brush chips to some of that kind of new program excitement, uh, and maybe resistance. Um, so we can see that we're kind of increasing here the, the total cubic yards of brush that are chipped. Uh, the number of residences is increasing. We went from thirty-nine to sixty-two. Um, and then I think sixty-six in May, which is on the next slide. Um, I've also presented here for you the minimum bid and maximum bid based on the questions that you all asked last month. Um, the winning bid that was chosen for each of these three months has always been the minute, the lowest bidder. Uh, again, that's not always going to be the case, but, uh, for these past three months, that, that was who won. Won. Uh, we also have on these slides, uh, the cost per cubic yard of brush. So we're really seeing, um, that the cost per cubic yard of brush appears to decrease as we increase in the total yards of cubic, uh, total cubic yards of brush chipped. Um, and we're hoping to see that same trend as we go on. Um, eventually these will probably level off. Let me show you slide three. Here, so here's the data for June as well. Um, you can see we're at about three thousand total cubic yards of brush for June, sixty-six residences served. Um, again, the lowest bidders were selected and we're averaging about four dollars and fifty-three cents per cubic yard of brush. Uh, this does not distinguish between brush that is either hauled or left on site. This is total, total cubic yards. Um, and I just want to comment that we also really look forward to using this data. If we move, if we do move forward with the GIS project, this will be a great opportunity to map this data and see where the brush chipping is occurring throughout the district, uh, and we'll be able to provide more targeted outreach to areas that maybe haven't participated in the program in the past or have higher, uh, cases of hazardous brush. We can really target those areas. Uh, that's all I have. And I see, um, Commissioner Tyson has a question.
Well, you know, I'm a numbers guy and I just really appreciate you showing us this data. I'm really pleased to see how it's, this program is maturing. So what I noticed is the spread between minimum and maximum bid is sort of narrowing. People are getting a feel for this and we're getting a better feel for it. We're also, this is nobody's, nobody owns this business. It's jumping around who, who's winning it. I love the competitive aspect of that. And that last point you made, Sarah, about tying this into GIS and saying, instead of just having stuff come to us, how can we focus areas that appear to need it to other information we have on say a total brush area? I think that's really a, really valuable way to make this even more powerful. Thank you.
Hi, this is Duffy. Can I ask you, go back to April, uh, on page two. And the thing that jumped out to me was this McClanahan bid at nineteen, the maximum bid was nineteen thousand. Explain that to me.
Uh, you'd have to ask the bidder.
Is that?
Uh, yeah, nineteen thousand. It's incredible, the range that we saw, um, initially, you know, a thousand dollars versus nineteen thousand dollars. Um, this was also though, the first month, uh, real, I guess really the first operational month of the pandemic. So that could have been something that came into play when these contractors were bidding, but, uh, you know, it's really speculation, how they come up with these numbers.
Okay. So that was directly from McClanahan. He sent that in, right?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry. So the, the McClanahan sent in the one thousand twenty. It was a different bidder.
Oh, okay. And the map, it was, okay, I'm looking at it as his line item and that's not the way.
Oh, yeah. No, sorry.
Okay. I'm not interpreting.
That was the winner.
Yes.
The winner. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Kearney, it looks like has a question.
Uh, yeah, thanks. I agree with everything that George said. I think this is great and tying it into GIS would be awesome. Can you go back to the first page, please? I have a quick question about, yeah, so, um, under contractor costs, there's FSC oversight, twelve percent contractor. Is that, uh, maybe, I guess I'm confused. I'm sorry. I didn't go back to look at the agreement with Fire Safe Council, but should that be part of the costs to Fire Safe? What, what is, why is that up under contractor?
So that's in the contract with Fire Safe Council. It's part of the uplift that we pay for them to manage those contractors, put together the RFP. Um, and, and do the bidding.
That's different than.
It's in addition to the twenty-five percent uplift.
I'm sorry. So that's in addition to the twenty-five percent uplift?
Yes.
So why isn't it under FSC costs?
Oh, it's in, I'm sorry. It's included in the total. Um, we just wanted to separate it out so that you could actually see how much we're paying for that.
Yeah, I guess.
Different factors, Terry. Different factors. One is twelve percent.
In the long run to know exactly what the FSC costs are, the subtotal FSC costs, which I don't think includes the twenty-five, the twelve percent. See what I'm saying?
I see. Okay.
So if someone were to say, you know, what is the total that we're paying FSC for this service as, you know, as a percentage of what the, the subcontractors charging, that might be some information.
Yes, absolutely. That's a discussion that staff has had. Um, so noted, for sure.
On that, uh, Commissioner Kearney, what's so fascinating about this exercise and these discussions is every time we have them, we figure out how to do it better. And so once we put the table together, then we sit back and we say, okay, what are the commissioners going to say? And what's not implicitly logical? And these are the conversations that make the next table much more logical. So if that makes any sense to you.
Yeah, no, it's a minor nip. And like I said, I agree with what George says. It's a great program. I really appreciate you guys, you know, diving into the data and collecting as much as possible.
Very helpful.
All good. All good.
But your comments are right on. And it was a conversation that three or four of us had yesterday of arranging those numbers and how to show. The, the dialogue is fantastic because that's the way we make all of this, uh, you know, more razor sharp. Don't worry if you have a conversation with the public. Thank you, thank you, thank you for keeping us on our toes. We want that. I'm smiling at you, Sarah. I know. Okay. That ends our report on those tables, uh, Mr. President.
10A. All right. Let's go to 10B. Home ignition zone, program emergency services, uh, program emergency services manager Gluhann, please provide update.
So, yeah, the home, yeah, the, the home ignition zone inspection program is carrying on. We were afraid for a moment there with COVID doing a surge and, uh, uh, a re-adjusting of what was allowable, uh, that we might be scaled back again, but, uh, it, it has been ongoing. Uh, did have a little bit of a hiccup again, losing some staff members with Fire Safe Council, but they have been putting everybody who's trained uh, to, to go out and do these. There, there is a struggle on their end. Um, they are a, uh, offshoot of the National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA, who is not sponsoring any certification courses this year due to COVID. So they're unable to get new employees certified in the methods that they want to. So they've had to do a lot more, uh, individual training instead of a, an online certification, uh, that would have normally happened. So it is moving ahead. We were almost caught up with the, um, the waiting list. I think we're still about two weeks behind, which we were about a month behind as of last meeting. So we're, we're getting, and they're still, um, very, uh, well received as an option in this current environment with the, uh, the difficulties that we have between COVID budgets, all those types of things. So it's a, a nice program to have residents doing in this time that their homes stay sheltered. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. All right. And then to move on to item 10C, shaded fuel break. Um, hazardous fuel reduction page bill, phase two, emergency services manager Gluhann, please provide the update.
Yeah. So I alluded to this a little bit in my report, uh, because we did lose, uh, JR Call, uh, rather suddenly. Uh, he was ready to begin phase two. Uh, it's on hold now until we can get, um, the interim project manager, Jim Young, up to speed. But we're hoping to get that started here in August, again, barring red flag days, uh, for, uh, the, um, the work to be done. Uh, so we want to make sure we can get on some cooler days before we get some of those hot end of summer, uh, early fall days. So we're, we'll have a timeline here, uh, in the next, uh, hopefully by next week when I meet with, uh, the, um, Jim Young from Fire Safe Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. All right. Is there any discussion from the commission? All right. Any public comment on these items? Hearing none. We'll now move on to item eleven, fire hydrant repair, replacement, and inventory project. Item eleven A memorandum report, General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, President Warren. Uh, the hydrant memorandum report, uh, is, is quite lengthy. Spent some time on it. Would like to take a little time with you tonight to review it. It sets the stage for a couple of the items that follow this memorandum report. The background section addresses how the district and Prisma Hills Water District relationship developed. The district has five hundred and forty hydrants and also owns the hardware all within, that all reside within the Prisma Hills Water District. This arrangement dates back to nineteen fifty when Prisma Hills Water District began work on installation of a water distribution system to furnish water within its boundaries. Prior to that, the water system was all individual ranches and farms. And Prisma Hills then combined those into one water system. Um, the fire district install its hydrants to, to make water from the water district um, available for fire protection. Prisma Hills Water District and the County of Santa Clara Board of Supervisors of Fire District entered into an agreement on October twenty-ninth of fifty-six to allow the fire district to attach hydrants to the water district's water mains. Under the terms of the fifty-six agreement, and this is what's important here, is the fire district owns the hydrants and is responsible for keeping the hydrants in good repair. Hydrants include all connections, valves, pipes, and fittings. And then in August of nineteen eighty, the Water District and the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors on behalf of the Fire District entered into another agreement to formally specify their respective rights and obligations in connection to those provisions of those water-related services that are necessary for fire protection purposes. The agreement is still in effect today. It requires the Fire District to ensure proper operations of the hydrants, including ensuring consistency with good water works and fire protection practices. Hydrants include, again, the connections, valves, pipes, fittings, uh, adjacent to the hydrant. Now going into the discussion of the memo, the, um, uh, there was a hydrant strike right after our last, um, commission meeting. It was on June thirtieth on La Paloma Road. And with the assistance of the on-call engineering consultant, immediate assessment of the damage and plan for repair initiated. The hydrant was completed on July seventeenth. This result demonstrates greater efficiency and a more expedient timeline than the prior hydrant strikes that took months for assessment and repair. So thanks to F and L and Jeff Tarantino for that excellent result. In addition to the hydrant damage, road repaving projects, water main construction projects require removal and replacement of district hydrant, hydrants. The construction requires staff to identify district-owned valves and markers that are removed and replaced. So there's, as a result of all of these various incidents, there is a need to establish a hydrant assessment and operations and a series of projects therefore are recommended that involve assignment to F and L. That's Friar and Loretta and the on-call engineer consultant Jeff Tarantino. And then the list of those projects, uh, five of them are in the memo. I'll briefly mention them. Project for on-call contractors for emergency hydrant repair is one. Second, inventory project to identify and record the infrastructure owned by the district. Three, additional GIS project as part of the inventory tracking. Four, project to review and report on three fire hydrant standard details. Those are engineering designs and drawings. And then five, a project to assess and report to the commission on identified sections of pipe adjacent to the Concepcion Road Water Main Replacement Capital Project Scheduled For Design Phase. To continue the project momentum and avoid delay between meetings, agenda item thirteen, which follows, recommends that the district increase the not exceed amount of the agreement between the district and F and L from thirty thousand to forty-five thousand dollars. And the attachment to the report is the F and L projected project budget. List the project expenditures, projected budget, and total project costs. So the recommendation to the memo report is to receive the report, provide direction to staff on the Los Altos Hills County Fire Hydrant Repair, Replacement, and Inventory Projects. I'm available, as is F and L consultant engineer Jeff Tarantino, who's on the phone with us tonight to answer any questions or provide comments on the projects. Jeff, do you have any comments you'd like to add after that quick introduction?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add. Thanks very much and, uh, good to see everybody again.
Thank you so much. So, uh, Mr. President.
I just want to say, just first of all, good work on getting that, uh, fire hydrant on La Paloma repaired fairly quickly. You know, the mailbox truck took it clean off, used it as a baller to stop. And you guys got it fixed up, reattached, and renovated in very short order.
Good. Thank you.
All right. So questions from the commission on the proposals here. So what we're going to do is, is, so this is item twelve, and so hopefully you all read your, your packets. So then we'll go through thirteen and fourteen, uh, and adopt the resolutions to actually, uh, actually, item, uh, thirteen to adopt, um, uh, the expenditures for, um, the F and L, um, increase in, uh, um, funding for the F and L, uh, contract. So let's go through and commissioners, um, get your comments, questions, concerns raised about the different projects here. And then we'll take, uh, input from the public. Um, we'll just go through the way people are arranged in the, my, my video. Roger, you're up first. Any questions, issues?
No comment. I'm good. Thank you.
George?
Like Roger, I'm good too. Thank you.
Great. Dennis? Dennis, you're on mute. Dennis, you're on mute. There we go.
Okay. No, I have no comment. No question.
Thank you, Dennis. Melvin?
No comment.
All right. Terry?
Thank you.
All right. Comments, questions from the public? All right. Not seeing any. Okay. So thank you, General Manager Logan. So we haven't had any comments from the public. We'll now move on to item 12, which is adoption of resolution 2025, resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District confirming the district president's approval authority and confirming the agreement between Los Altos Hills County Fire District and DECO Construction for the emergency repair of damaged fire hydrant. All right. So item 12, which is 12A, resolution 2025 of Los Altos Hills County Fire District confirming that district president's approval of authority and confirming the agreement between Los Altos Hills County Fire District and DECO Construction for emergency repair of the damaged fire hydrant. Legal counsel Seagull, is there a presentation for this item? On 12.
Just briefly, as was stated earlier by General Manager Logan, this is when the postal truck hit the hydrant. Apparently didn't even know that it hit the hydrant because it saw the retaining while we hide the hydrant, and that's what it was aiming for. It was between meetings and we needed to get the repair done quickly, especially in fire season. So the president went through those processes, authorized it. This is to bring it back to you for the report. I believe Corey has the exact amount of money that was spent at this time, but it did not exceed the $5,040 set forth in the resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from staff or the commission?
No. Commissioner Spring, I'll move to adopt the resolution 2025.
All right. Thank you, Roger. I need a second from.
Price, Price will second it.
All right. Are there any comments or, is there discussion from the commission? On this item? All right. Hearing none. Is there any comment from the public on this item? All right. The, hearing none. There's no further discussion. We'll now vote.
President Warren.
Vargas?
Yes, Warren, may I just make a comment? It seems as though people are not aware of a Zoom feature. If you keep yourself on mute and then you just put your put your hand on the spacebar and press it down, you unmute, and as soon as it goes, it mutes again. And it's much simpler than what I think I'm seeing some of you do going over to find it, click, and go back and forth, especially for voting. Let's just try that.
That's a good hack, George. That's a great hack. All right. Now to voting. All right. District Clerk Vargas?
Yes, thank you. To put on my financial consultant hat for one second, let you know the actual amount billed from DECO was $4,220. So it did go under the estimate of $5,040. So now I will do roll. President Warren?
Are you on board?
You were so quick that we couldn't hear you.
We were so quick. Could you say that again for the record, please? President Warren? Did we lose him?
He's frozen.
Technical difficulties.
George, wait. You know what it is? It's the voice thing. Your line is muted. Your voice is unmuted. Every time I press the bar, I get, you know, is that three, four seconds of of that. So, thanks, George, for that hack.
Yeah, right.
If I answered the vote question, yes.
Thank you. Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
All right. And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Well, now move on to item 13, adoption of resolution 2026, resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing execution of amendment one to the professional services agreement between the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Friar Loretta Incorporated for on-call emergency consultant services. All right. General Manager Logan, is there a presentation at this time?
Thank you, President Warren. As discussed in the memorandum report above, I recommend adoption of resolution 20-26 to increase the not-to-exceed amount in the professional services agreement from $30,000 to $45,000. End of comment.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? All right. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion. While the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state your name for the benefit of the recording.
Price recommends approval of resolution number 2026.
Vaughn seconds.
Very good. Thank you. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? I don't hear any. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Well, now move to item 14, adoption of resolution 2027, resolution of Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing execution of professional services agreement between the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Jackson Ricketts Drone Productions for videographer services. General Manager Logan, is there a presentation for this item?
Just very quick comments. This was, again, a discussion of the use of Jackson Ricketts video videography in the trailer repair video, video two. Now, this resolution would allow for adoption of resolution 20-17 to approve the professional service agreement with Jackson Ricketts for drone productions for video services to demonstrate vegetation management. And we've talked about that a little bit through the meeting today. The location of the video will be the district vacant lot, which is in need of weed, brush, and branch cleanup. The video scope is attached to the resolution exhibit one, and it will, the demonstration of the video will be a drone flyover in an aerial view of the lot, an eye level drone flyover of the eye level view, and then commentary by Captain Gluhan on vegetation management, property hygiene, before and after photos, and really a training to residents as to how they can go about doing their own vegetation management on similar property. And with that quick introduction, I'd like to introduce to you Jackson Ricketts, who's with us tonight. And Jackson, if you have some comments that you'd like to make just about the video one, your experience with the district, and anything about video two, that would be really great. So I'll turn it over to you, Jackson, for any comments you'd like to make.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for having us, everyone on this board, everyone on this meeting. The last shoot that we did went fantastic. The team brought their A-game, and it was really an education piece. And I said, I think the idea of moving from written word and pictures and pamphlets and things to video, I think it's the right one because you're able to reach a lot more people. You're able to reach people over time, which is a very valuable asset for departments such as yourself. And I think it's a great way to communicate nowadays to many different demographics and many different audiences. And so our job is to, so we do drone, we do professional drone services as well as videography and video production. And our job is to really highlight and make you guys look like professionals, the professionals that you are, and tell the stories that we want to tell.
Very good. Okay.
And we have some, we have some fantastic projects lined up. Everybody seems to be very excited, very on board about them, and I am quite excited as well.
And I think the lovely thing that I've noticed in working with Jackson is he's so flexible. And when he shows up, it's not a big production. It's just an expert carrying a camera, makes everybody feel very comfortable in front of the camera, and lets us tell our story. And we've got good stories to tell. And as Jackson mentioned, what we want to do is take where we've relied on written words and brochures and meetings, and now move them into the videography realm and have the short snippet videos. We're going to do them in segments. I've asked for the segments to be between five and seven minutes. And that way, it captures the audience. We get the message across with pictures and with minimum of words, and I think it's going to be really a way of reaching more, more levels of communication within our fire district. So that's the hope. I think we're on to a really good thing. And we've talked about it through the meeting. So that's, that's the end of my comments.
Great. Thanks, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission?
Yes, this is Duffy speaking. Thank you. I think this is a great idea, but I'm concerned a little bit about, is there copyright? Do we have, do we own it? Does he own it? How do we deal with all that? Has that been covered?
Yes. District Council Seagull, do you want to mention that? Because we've got a lot of language in that agreement.
I think that between Commissioner Price and General Manager Logan, you covered it. We were concerned about that. We have language in the agreement. Jackson was very accommodating putting in language that works for us, recognizing public records, but also, as Commissioner Carr talked about earlier, privacy. And we think we've
Sure.
handled that.
That's great. I apologize. My computer's been down. So you sent that document to me that would have been item number 14, agenda. I didn't get it. So basically, I'm sorry, but thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you. I will now entertain a motion.
I see. Terry, Terry, sorry, Kearney, did you have a question?
Terry, do you have a question?
Yeah, briefly, and I apologize if I missed it again. I see that this is the second amendment number two. I just don't recall seeing the agreement or amendment number one.
Okay. So that's going to come up in item 15. And we don't have a copy of the PSA that we sent out to the commission, but it's certainly available if you would like to see it. It's a pre-standard professional services agreement.
Yeah.
I see the background. Yeah, so Jay, the background, you went ahead and, and made the, under using your authority to make the expenditure in the July timeframe, and under 15A, you're coming back under, and you're reporting that expense. And then this is, and so Terry, I think to clarify, we're, we got, we got the second amendment here to what Jay did in July.
Let me, it's not an amendment, though. It's a separate new contract.
Okay.
Right. This, what's in front of us now for the drones is a contract that's coming in what I'll call the ordinary course of business because there was time to bring it to the commission meeting, the work that was done before, because the material was no longer to be on the corpse site, needed to be taken care of before this. So there are two separate contracts. It was referenced, one done by General Manager Logan, and then this that is to the council, but it's a wholly separate contract. So it is the second contract with Jackson Records, but it is not an amendment. It's a separate contract.
Okay. And so the, the contract, the copyright provisions to which you were referring earlier isn't the first contract?
We, ownership is in both contracts, but specifically what we're talking about, ownership here of the drone flight and the flyover has been expanded, and it's in this contract that's in front of you.
Okay.
Is item 14.
Correct. So you guys.
Any other agreement? I just was snooping around for it in the attachment. I couldn't find it.
Okay. Anything else, Terry?
No.
Okay. Anything else? All right. With that, I'll now entertain a motion. While the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state your name for the benefit of the recording.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve item 20-27, and this is Tyson speaking.
Vaughn on a second.
Thank you. All right. The item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item?
This is Alan Epstein. I have a question about the insurance requirements. Section nine talks about insurance requirements, and it says a statement, up to $25 million in drone insurance, and it says to refer to exhibit two. When I go down to exhibit two, I don't see any discussion of drone insurance. So I guess my question is, is videographer represents, he can get up to $25 million of insurance. The the contract talks about getting up to 25 million, but doesn't specify how much insurance are you supposed to have?
Yes, that, that is a great question. Depending on the nature of your risk department, how much risk you'd like to take, we can take, we can do anywhere from $1 million to $25 million in aviation insurance, whatever you guys seem deemed necessary. My general clients generally take about 2 million to 10 million. We can do up to 25 million per day, per drone flight.
Who makes that determination? Jay, will you make that determination, what we need to do?
Well, Jackson hasn't seen the location yet. We'd need to take a look at the location, then I'll, I'll talk with Dan Seagull, legal counsel, and make a determination. We haven't scheduled any of this yet, so it's on the day of the flight.
So Alan, I think to answer your question is that they will, they will purchase the appropriate amount of insurance before they do the shooting.
Correct.
That's, that's wonderful. Fine, fine with me. It just needs to be documented. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. There's no further discussion. We will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes, I just want the record to reflect that I did actually plan to get access to exhibit 14A, which was uploaded about five hours ago. I've been reviewing it.
Thank you. All right. And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to financial consultant update. Item 15A, report on the general manager's approval of and expenditures of the First Amendment to extend independent contractor agreement for consulting services for special projects services consultant from July 1st, 2020 to July 31st, 2020, with Sarah Hendricks between meetings. And items 15B, report on general manager approval of an expenditure on professional services agreement with Jackson Ricketts DVA, Jackson Ricketts Drone for video services of fire hydrant operations and infrastructure. Financial consultant Vargas, please provide the report.
All right. Thank you, President Warren. So item A is to extend the agreement, resolution 20-6, which was approved at the February 18th meeting to, for Sarah Hendricks as special projects services consultant. The original termination date of that contract was June 30th. So you'll recall last meeting, the commission authorized general manager Logan to execute certain limited agreements for goods and services for the benefit of the district. certain limited agreements for goods and services for the benefit of the district in between meetings. And because we enjoy so much working with Sarah, we wanted to extend her contract. So July 1st through July 31st is this First Amendment. And then later on, Agenda item number 16 is going to be the Second Amendment, where you will vote on extending her for a longer period of time. The expected expenditures for the month of July for Sarah is probably going to be around $3,500, so below the limit of 10,000, which the general manager was authorized. And then B is the video services with Jackson Ricketts. Now, this is separate from the resolution you just passed, which is for the vegetation. What Jay, the agreement that Jay signed was for the hydrant, the hydrant connection lateral video that was shot, I believe, last Wednesday. That resolution had, or I'm sorry, that agreement had a not to exceed $2,100. I have not received final billing yet, as it is still in progress. And again, between the two of them, Sarah and Jackson, General Manager Logan is below the 10,000 between meeting authorization that you gave to her last month. And that's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, Corey. All right. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. We will now move on to item 16, adoption of Resolution 2028, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing execution of Amendment Two, to the independent contractor agreement of consultant, for consultant services for special project services consultant between the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Sarah Hendricks. All right. General Manager Logan, is there a presentation for this item?
Yes, thank you, President Warren. The first thing I would like to do is call your attention to the typo correction on the last whereas, I think this is second to last whereas, where the date is February 16th, 2020. It needs to be revised to state February 16th, 2021. So District Clerk Vargas, if you could make that correction, I would appreciate it. And then I would like to recommend that the independent consultant agreement with Sarah Hendricks for special project services consulting be extended from the dates until February 16th. And I guess it would extend August the 1st through February 16th, 2021. Sarah has a number of projects that she's assisting with, strategic planning being one of them, video, videography being a second, just a number of projects in her scope of services, and would like to extend her agreement with the district for independent consulting services. So that's the end of my report. Take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jay. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? None? All right. I will now entertain a motion. Well, the Commissioner making the motion, and the Commissioner seconding said motion, please state their names for the benefit of the recording.
Commissioner Spreen will move the resolution.
Give a second.
Price, seconds.
Thank you, Duffy. All right. The item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? If there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you.
And I should have mentioned, I just wanted to say how pleased I am to continue to work with Sarah and be in her capable hands.
Thank you, George. A second back.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now move on to item 17, Los Altos Hills County Fire District Strategic Plan. And 17A memorandum report, and 17B request authority from Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners for expenditure in the amount not to exceed $5,000 for preplanning for a proposal for this successor, Los Altos Hills County Fire District Strategic Plan. General Manager Logan, please present the report.
Thank you, President Warren. I would love to do this. The memorandum reports states in the background that after multiple conversations with CPSE for facilitation of the strategic planning, and due to limitations in in-person meetings on July 6, 2020, CPSE advised the district of formally withdrawing all proposals submitted for strategic planning facilitation. And then in the discussion of the memo report, it summarizes that there are sufficient communication systems available to do the strategic planning via virtual meetings. There's no best time to convene the strategic planning process. In other words, we can't wait. We've just got to move forward. But there is a desire to move forward utilizing the skills and talents of the current commission to plan and approve the successor strategic plan document. It's helpful to always have an active strategic plan as the basis for decision-making and expenditures. In light of the very rapid rate of change occurring both inside and external to the district, it may not be the most effective to project a strategic direction for the next five years. The belief is that it's worth having this strategic plan effort to provide a two- or three-year outlook. It's important for the Board of Commissioners to provide their time to forge a group sense of longer-term strategic priorities and needs of the district during the process that will occur during the remainder of this year. The 2015-2020 Strategic Plan is one of the three pillars of the district, and the successor document is needed to support that designated pillar. As the next step, it's recommended that the staff work with MRG, Management Resources Consulting Group, on the details of a successor strategic plan process, and what services MRG can provide, along with a detailing of methods available to facilitate strategic plan meetings. Once this preplanning is completed as a Phase One and development of a Phase Two for implementation, staff will then come back to the commission and present a strategic plan process for the commission to consider, probably at the September 15th is the target date, kind of assuming that the August meeting will be canceled. The recommendation is to request authority from the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners for expenditures in an amount not to exceed $5,000 for preplanning for the successor Los Altos Hills County Fire District Strategic Plan. Phase Two scope and costs will be determined during this Phase One process. I'd ask Legal Counsel Siegel to comment on the mechanism for the professional services agreement with MRG for Phase One. And then Marcy Scott is also gracious enough to join us this evening and available to respond to questions or to provide comments. So Dan, maybe you can talk about the mechanism for the professional services agreement that would come forth with approval of this by the commission.
I'm happy to. And as General Manager Logan spoke about, we had to pivot quickly because the expectation had been that we could use CPSE to do this work. And so, excuse me, Phase One, as was discussed, would be putting together the project. How do we do this in a COVID world? What adjustments need to be made? Those types of items. And the method to do that would be for the general manager to enter into the contract for Phase One, and anticipating Phase Two between now and the next meeting. What would come at likely the September meeting is the decision-making process for the commission to determine what type of Phase Two they want to move forward with. Do they want to move forward? Is the proposal robust, not robust enough, too robust? Those items. And so the expectation is, the agreement we will come to with MRG, assuming that there's direction to move forward, would be for the general manager to enter into a contract that contemplates multiple phases, but all that would be agreed to at this point in time is Phase One. I should say I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. All right. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Thank you, District Council Siegel. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission?
Perhaps Marcy Scott would like to make some comments also.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Marcy?
Hi, good evening. Nice to see you all. And I think the last time I saw the commission was in March, just a day or two after the stay-home orders were made. And now, just a few minutes, a few meetings later, you're running like a Swiss train. So this is great. And as we find ourselves in this environment that's not going to change for a while, I would echo the comments that the general manager made about having to figure out how to move forward with processes that generally we would be very engaged with the public and with our stakeholders. So our firm has a lot of experience in organization and strategic solutions, and I'm happy to provide input and assist the staff as they develop a proposal for this successor strategic plan process. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. All right. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Hearing none?
But I won't wait to be called upon. So what I gather is, in effect, we're sort of retrenching, and we still have some outside support in this. But I think, General Manager Logan, I think you're saying that we, as commissioners, have to be prepared to really own this project and make this successful. And I think that's what I'm gathering is a key message. Is that right?
I believe so. I think this is where everyone has to put their shoulders together. And I think it's going to be more organic and more homegrown by doing it this way. I look forward to that. I think with Marcy Scott being available to us, she went through quite a learning curve to do the last work she did with the commission, and knows the commissioners, knows the issues that we're about, knows where we've been, knows where we want to go, help with that vision. So I think we're really well situated, being that we had to move very quickly after being told that we didn't have an off-the-shelf kind of strategic plan that could be done. So now, this is a great opportunity to put our shoulders together as staff and commission, and really forge ahead with a vision, a mission, strategic plan statements with flexibility, and with seeing what's going on around us with positive solutions. That will always be my bottom remark, is no matter what happens, we take it, we grasp it, and we move forward with positive solutions. So thank you for that question, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission, questions, certifications? Okay, not hearing any. Is there any public comment on this item? Alan?
Thank you. I'm just a little confused as to exactly what the project entails. Is this a preparation of an RFP to find a consultant to assist with the development of the strategic plan? Or is this an outline on how the commissioners are going to develop the strategic plan? It isn't quite clear to me what exactly is entailed in the project. And then I guess the question, the second question is, is are there other consultants that might also be considered for the role? I appreciate Marcy's understanding of the organization. I don't know anything about her background with regards to strategic plans and fire districts. Thank you.
Jay, will you field that?
Was that Dan Siegel?
Will you take that question?
I'm sorry, Mark, did you say Jay or Dan?
Jay.
Oh, Jay. Oh, sorry. I thought you said, I was looking at Dan. Dan, do you want to take that question?
Apparently, I do. Yeah, so the expectation is that MRG, which consists of much more than Marcy Scott, and Marcy can speak about that if the commission would like, would indeed do the plan. But because of the timeframe to bring it to this meeting, and the fact that the August meeting will likely be canceled, the thought is just to move forward with Phase One today, which is, what does it mean, as Commissioner Tyson just spoke about? What can a consultant do? What does the commission need to do? What's appropriate, given the externalities of COVID and other items going on in our world? And then at the next meeting, the expectation would be that the commission would give a thumbs up or a thumbs down to moving forward with Phase Two, and then maybe more than two phases of the project. The expectation is not that this is to create an RFP and to go out and solicit additional consultants in this COVID world. It would also put the strategic plan significantly further out there. Marcy or Jay, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add or clarify on that?
I would like to add, because once we got the word from CPSE, both Sarah Hendricks and myself reached out to our network and resources, and we did vet some other consultants that might be interested. And it was interesting, because the ones that we talked to all said, you know who you need to contact is MRG. They're the ones that do this kind of really well. They'll be able to help you. So that took us back to MRG, and Marcy was the person I knew that I picked up the phone and called and talked with her about this opportunity. So there was a vetting of other consultants available. And of course, CPSE was certainly vetted very well. It just didn't work out. And we started in March. We were ready, we were ready to sign that agreement in March. And that's when we went into the shelter-in-place. They couldn't fly out. They couldn't convene the meetings. Then we resubmitted for September, had tentative dates the end of September. And again, the situation hasn't lessened. If anything, it's gotten more dire as far as traveling and meetings. So that was how the vetting occurred. CPSE, other vendors led to MRG. And I think this is a good solution and a good plan for background statement.
This is Duffy speaking, and I'd like to just add that I think MRG would be good to move forward. But I also think it's going to be important. We've had our ad hoc committee on strategic planning for the last few years, and perhaps that we should offer some guidance at this point. I mean, we've been there and, you know, have, you know, done quite a lot of work. And I'd be interested with Roger, what you think about this also, whether we could offer some assistance. In other words, are we turning this over to the general manager to work this out with the consultant on the outside? Or should it not have some of the input from the, you know, commissioners as to guide them in their, you know, in the process of developing this overall plan, the first phase? I mean, at some point, Marcy, I'd be interested in hearing what you have to say about this. In other words.
I'd like to, kind of what my vision is, is to utilize the strategic plan commissioners who've been on board all along, but then to open it to the public and make this more of a task force conversation with the public and with the commissioners to forge this first phase, moving into the second phase, along with Marcy. So, yes, the commission, I see the staff, commissioners, we'd have to have a minority of commissioners and the public, and have them all soundboard and talk. On Zoom so easily. I think that would be a natural transition then into coming back to the commission in September with a recommendation.
Yeah, that sounds good. I like that idea, too. Roger, what's your thought?
I can offer a little more color for everybody. It was, it was considered to be very important for us to make sure we have a strategic plan in place, especially on top of the audit work going on, and all the budgetary and hiring and strategic decisions we're making, for us to a point to a strategic plan as the basis of this. to a strategic plan as the basis of this is important. And we didn't want to run out and not have one going into next year. It was a big loss for us to have CPSC really frankly kind of drop the ball on us now, because, you know, they did the last one. They know our material. They wrote it for us. They've been part of the process. They understand the interaction. And the expectation was they would lead us through this, keep us on schedule. They knew what they needed to pull together to give us revision of our previous one. So when they all of a sudden, I'll say all of a sudden said, sorry, we can't do it. It just doesn't, we're not prepared to work in this kind of environment. That left us with a decision to make. We could have waited until things cleared up and brought CPSC back in, but that really isn't going to be until next year. And our fitting in our ad hoc committee was, we can't afford to wait then and kind of go without a backing plan. So given that this really should be a, an update to an existing plan based on all the progress we've made in the past five years, which is considerable, how can we ourselves incrementally move forward and not wait a year to make that happen? So we looked about, you know, what kind of assistance can we have? Let's find someone locally who can guide us to that, who has experience with it. But then we are going to have to take a little more of that on our own shoulders, but we're also going to be working in a virtual meeting kind of environment. So this is really, Mike's, you know, choice here really shows that the importance that we place on keeping a strategic plan process moving forward with someone who can get us one on time despite an unprecedented obstacle to doing such a thing.
I think we also need to work with, if we're going to choose Marcy to work, go forward with, we need to get what our end product is going to be at some point. Are we going to end up with another five-year plan, two-year plan, one-year plan? Is it going to be documented and publishable that we have, like we had with this last one, had guided us so well? So we need to scope that all out. So Marcy, any thoughts on all this discussion?
Yes, thank you. And I think the intent of this initial process is to provide some options for the commission to consider and for the commission to decide on the scope and, and the term of this next step for the deliverable, which will be your successor's strategic plan. And I agree with all the comments that the existing document now is excellent. It's very thorough, but you're in a much different place today than you were in 2015 when you did the first process. And so you can build on that foundation. And the commission should decide on what that scope looks like. But what we can do is help by teeing up some options for you to consider and what that timeline looks like to ensure that you get a final product within the timeframe that you want.
I'd also like to highlight one thing that Duffy mentioned is, because we spent some time talking about this, what should the duration, scope of this next strategic plan be? We don't, we don't have to decide this tonight, but, you know, we don't have to go in thinking, oh, it's a five-year plan. We're doing another five-year plan. Given how it's going to change, the way things are changing, both in our district and with the context around us, in our, in our county situation, it might make sense to do a, a smaller term one, two to three years. And part of it is looking at what other groups are doing. Others have done shorter-term ones as well, which will also limit the, hopefully, the scope it takes for us to actually produce this document. So I just want to highlight that as an open question that will probably come out of this first phase as well.
Right. Good. So can we move, any more input? Can we move forward then?
Right. That's what I need to do now, Duffy, is, is there any comment, other sort of comments from the Public Order Commission?
Actually, I'll just, that was a long one to answer to Alan's question. I hope, I hope that answered, gave Alan some more framing of what this is about.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Okay. Do we have a consensus of the commission for General Manager Logan to spend up to $5,000 for strategic plan, pre-planning? Is that something from the commission? That's affirmative?
Yes.
A direction or, or do we want to, do we make a motion for it? Or what's?
No, because with our spending authority, we're just looking for a, a consensus. Is, is General Manager Logan on the right track, move forward with pre-planning activity? We're just looking for a sense of the commission.
No objections here. I support it.
I support it.
George?
So, yes, yes, too.
Sounds like a great opportunity to excel.
Thank you. Janice?
Yes, definitely.
Motivation on class.
And Melvin?
I support it.
All right. Thank you. So Jay, I think you have your marching orders.
Okay. Thank you. Marcy, we've got our marching orders, and Sarah will be part of the team. Denise will all be in there. Cory, we're all part of it. And we'll need a task force and invite the public to work with us. Make sure we're on track.
All right. Now we get to finish this thing up strong. All right. Let's move on to 18, 18A. This is the consent calendar. Approval of the draft minutes of June 16th, 2020 regular meeting of meeting and item 18B, received period report 12, June 2020. Are there any comments from the staff on these items? All right. Hearing none? Would anyone like to poll any item, any of the items from the consent calendar? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? If there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Very much. We'll now move on to item 19, receive dispersments. Item 19A accrued to June 2020, and item 19B, July 2020. Financial Consultant Vargas, please share the dispersments.
Okay, thank you. So commissioners, you should have the dispersments in front of you. So as you know, at the end of the year, we have to accrue the expenses. So any of the bills that we receive in early July, I, I will expense those that pertain to the fiscal year 20 back to June on the books. So what you have in front of you is the accrued expenses. Those are the bills that we received sort of after year-end closing. And then I also provided bills that I was able to pay between our last meeting, June 16th and June 30th. And then I also provided the list of dispersments that was given to you last June. So then you have your total June dispersments in front of you. And then what I also have, July dispersments, what we've received so far that is for this current fiscal year, fiscal year 21. That's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion from the commission? Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none? We will now move on to item 20, commission member reports. Are there any reports from the commissioners?
Duffy speaking. Basically, I wanted to just share with you that the advertisement that we recently had posted, that we had developed, and Jay worked with the updating it, and it was in the Living Magazine of last issue of the Town Crier, I hope you all saw it, was a very well-done ad, okay, expressing what our services are. And then the second item I want to mention is, not only is Denise going to participate in the Los Altos Hills Club meeting, a Zoom meeting in September, but Commissioner Kearney is going to also participate. So we will have a meeting that will be developing what services are offered and basically that we offer for the district as well as Commissioner Kearney's previous experience with the rescue at the Camp Fire. Hey, and by the way, the other thing is, the Camp Fire, I just read in the Chronicle, maybe you all read it today, that Ron Howard has written a fantastic documentary on the Camp Fire. Commissioner Kearney, are you aware of that?
I am not aware of that.
Yeah, it's going to, it's Friday, I think Friday evening or the end of this month, he's going to actually, it'll be a documentary on it. So you should definitely pay attention to it, because you may even be in it.
There was a frontline that was fantastic on PBS about a year ago or earlier.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was just wonderful. It was, I think, a two-hour special. But there's, there's been much written on that. I'm glad that Ron is contributing.
Right. And thank you again for your willingness to participate. It was wonderful. That's all I have.
Thanks, Duffy. Denise, we can hardly hear you.
Oh, let me get my video off.
So you're very faint.
Hardly.
Hardly.
I just, I went to that screening two weeks ago. I was invited.
Oh, you did?
First responder. It's by National Geographic. It's very good. It's a good, it's a good, it's a good documentary.
Good.
Definitely recommend.
Thanks. Thank.
All right. Any other commission member report?
Yes, I have one. This is George.
George.
I want to say that I appreciate Santa Clara County participating in the town of Los Altos Hills, Fourth of July, a parade. It was a caravan of cars, but it was great fun, and I was glad to see that. And then secondly, and more importantly, you may know that I'm a member of Cupertino Rotary, and I'm going to be introducing a friend of mine, who is a special guest, who's the speaker at our Wednesday meeting, Ari O'Keeffe Kearney. She's to be Terry Kearney's wife, and she's going to talk about Santa Clara County search in Musquee, and I'm sure it'll be outstanding. If you would like to participate, it's a Zoom meeting, contact me, and I'm sure I can arrange an invitation. You could be my guest. It's at noon on Wednesday.
Very good. Thanks, George. Any additional commission member reports? All right. Hearing no further commission member reports? Is there any public comment on this item? Then we will move on to item 21, consideration of cancellation of the August 18th, 2020 regular meeting. General Manager Logan, is there a presentation for this item?
No, I think that we've had a very diligent agenda today, and we've gotten a lot of work done, and staff and commissioners are going to need time to work in August. So if there is not a meeting, we can use it well for work and to deliver a good product in September 15th, which is really the quickest meeting we can have in September, because the first of September is Tuesday. So September 15th will be on us before we know it. End of my report.
Very good. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Yes, so I'll now entertain a motion with, this is to cancellation of the August 18th, 2020 regular commission meeting. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording.
This is Duffy speaking. I recommend that we not host a meeting in August.
All right. Thank you, Duffy. Will you give a second?
Tyson will second.
All right. Thank you, George. That is now open for discussion from the commissioners. Any, any questions? Hearing none? Is there any public comment on this item?
Just a question, is the audit going to be on that September 15th agenda?
We haven't set the 15th agenda, but we should have a readout from the FGOC meeting scheduled for the end of August.
No, I apologize. I meant the financial audit.
Oh, the annual financial audit.
Cory can speak to that. The financial audit starts August the 2nd, I think.
It's, yeah, yeah. So, you know, it depends on since the meeting in September is, as Jay said, as early as you can get. It depends on whether Ida Bailey, our auditors, can get the report to us before then, or if not, then it'll be on October's meeting.
All right. Any other, any other district public comment? All right. We will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion enthusiastically passes seven to zero.
Excellent. No, we'll now move on to item 22, adjournment. All right. This concludes the July 28th, 2020 regular meeting of Los Altos Hills County Fire District. This meeting adjourned at 9:27 PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on September 15th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please stop the recording.